To our city, and we once again ask for your divine wisdom and guidance on this board of mayor commissioners today as we strive to make the right decisions on behalf of our city and our citizens. Be with our city manager and staff, be with our employees, and most of all, our citizens. Bless those in attendance and in our viewing audience today, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let us stand and salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wertz. Do we have a motion to receive and file the agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion to receive and file the minutes for the called meeting held May 24th, 2021, and the called meeting held May 25th, 2021?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearings and reports, commissioners?
I just want to welcome everybody to our new meeting. We got a lot of things going on, and I don't want to take anybody's thunder, so I'm just going to mention a few we've been at. Furcon Fest, I felt like was a huge success, and I want to thank all those involved in volunteering and everything. It was a huge crowd and very well attended. And Summer Motion is going to have fireworks probably in 10 days, that's July 4th. We have how many meetings? One meeting in July, don't we?
Mm-hmm.
What's the date on that?
Twenty...
The end of July?
Twenty-second? Maybe? I don't know.
Twenty-second?
Hang on, that might not be right. Let me look at the calendar.
We're going to have one meeting in July.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Yep.
And I went with 23 junior build Ashland kids to Central Park. So anybody that says Central Park isn't clean, they're just mistaken, because we scoured the park, and those kids were very, very, I mean, they were energetic and enthusiastic and had pride in their park and so forth. And so I was happy to be with those kids from Crab the other day, and we're going to keep doing that around the school system when school gets started and start the recycling thing back, too. We're trying to work on Food Truck Friday coming up, maybe in Central Park, maybe we're shooting for July the 9th. But I want to get my heads together with my fellow commissioners and staff, and so we're just in the planning stages right now. But thanks for coming.
Hi, everybody. It's good to see all those faces out there today. And I saw a lot of those faces at Furcon Fest. It was a huge success, and I had the privilege of checking IDs all day. So the police department, we've been really proud of the job I did, as I made some people mad, and that's always good, isn't it?
Amen.
At any rate, right, I was surprised that there were people from Tennessee and Missouri and Virginia, Michigan, lots from Ohio, a lot from West Virginia, also a couple from California. Don't know if they were here visiting or whatever, but we had people from all over the place. And that's what we like, is when we draw people all over to our fair city. And I think they were really, really impressed with what went on over there. So I was happy to be a part of that. And of course, our gal from Visit Ashland was right in the middle of that all. So we appreciate everybody jumping in and all the volunteers. I mean, it was a huge undertaking, but it, what a nice event for our town. Also went to Juneteenth in the park, and that was another nice event. And so, and I've done a lot of other stuff, but you know what? I forget what they are. I've been so busy. So I'll let the other commissioners, and then I'll say, I did that, too.
Just a note, you know, not to belabor the Furcon Fest speak, but I think this year's Furcon Fest was probably one of the most successful that we've had, if not the most successful in terms of the number of people and the tickets sold and all of that sort of, you know, the metrics that you use to say that something is successful. I always define success for that event for the, you know, thousand-plus people that are in the middle of Winchester Avenue for a few hours on a Saturday, and...
So Amanda, wasn't it fourteen, close to fourteen hundred people? Was it more than that?
Well, we sold over, I think we sold eleven hundred tickets, which doesn't mean it was just eleven hundred people there, because, you know, the festival is actually free and open to the public. It's just the beer tasting that you buy the ticket for. So, you know, at least a thousand people on the street at any given time, I would guess. But this year, just want to give kudos specifically Ashland in Motion to fellow board members, all the volunteers that worked together to put this on, and how well all of that was coordinated through Visit Ashland. Without the Visit Ashland staff, we could not, we could not have pulled off what we did on Saturday. And them working with Ashland in Motion, working with the city staff, just to make sure that that event went off without a hitch, just, I just want to personally say thank you to everybody who had a hand in it, because I think in those instances, we really get to show people what a fantastic place this is, and that always, that's, that's success for me in that, in that aspect. And points us to being able to do that in other, in other areas. So I think we've got a fabulous team going, and I think that we are building a fantastic volunteer network, so that that's not going to be the only thing that you see happening downtown.
I will tell you one comment I had from an Ironton couple, and they're like, we're here because Ashland's all we have. I was impressed with it.
I'm sure Ironton's mayor would love that.
Exactly. Well, I've been to the Augurana Tower, too.
I got the T-shirt.
Yeah, just to echo a little bit about, about Furcon Fest, obviously it's a great event, and having a synergy between our tourism group now and Ashland in Motion, and thank you Commissioner Clark and all of us that serve on those boards. It's all volunteer work, and a lot of those events literally don't happen if that, that work doesn't happen. So thank you all for putting on a great event. It was fun for me, as always. So Juneteenth, as Commissioner Spriggs mentioned, you know, that was, that was an event that we've been working on for a long time, way before it became a federal holiday. So we heard from a lot of people who came, who were looking to, you know, I'll just say, I didn't, until the last year or so, I didn't even, wasn't aware of Juneteenth. So, you know, learning what it was and the education of that holiday and why it's important. And then our city being on the forefront of one of the first cities, you know, there were a few communities around the country celebrated it, obviously. Some already have, but being, being one of those first to celebrate it after it's been a federal holiday, we had people from Charleston and some other, other areas that said, you know, they were looking for events to go to for Juneteenth and found this one, because it was, the organizers did a very good job of marketing it. So very proud of those organizers, because these events, no matter what the event is, it's tough to organize an event. I don't care what it is.
Yep.
And we were all talking about, you know, once the, or the event's over, you're exhausted. And it's, and usually, after a big event is over, a big weekend like we had, you have some time to relax. I don't know that we're going to get that time anymore, so that's a good thing. We appreciate it, appreciate, appreciate everybody that, that made Juneteenth happen and, or our celebration of it. And also appreciate our city staff, who obviously, as we have more events, that's, that's more, that the city staff has to organize and understand how, how that happens. So appreciate the manager and, and the city staff for working on that, and all the groups that I talk to, their interaction with the city staff, it's, it's excellent. And appreciate that, and that's something that we definitely have to have on point as we have more, more events. And also, so we have pictures in the park Saturday, right?
Broadway Square.
Yeah, Broadway Square, Field of Dreams?
Mm-hmm.
This weekend? Okay. Also, last night, so we, we had, we had, I was walking through the alley to go home last night, and there was, there was an accident over at the flood wall. And I was walked literally from the alley out to the corner of the curb to go over and was, I could see there was an accident, I was going to dial 911. And before I could get over there, a police officer was on the scene, and from the other side. Now, obviously, the station's closed, but they were coming from the other side. Then a fire truck was right behind. And I mean, I would almost say seconds. So, and I've been in other places, even in the neighborhoods, and have seen things happen. The, our officers in our fire department are amazing. I mean, the, the response time that they have, and on the scene, and, and taking care of anything that happens, just say thank you all for that. I saw it firsthand again last night, so thank you for it.
I have one more thing. You talked about not getting a break and not taking a rest. We forgot to mention that First Friday is coming up, July the 2nd, so a week from, this Friday is July's First Friday. So put that on your calendar as well.
And one more thing. July 1st is the, the Bluegrass Wind Ensemble will be at the Central Park Bandstand. Yours Truly will be...
The conductor.
Are you going to be a conductor?
I feel sorry for anybody who's a professional conductor, thinking that I will be, but I'm honored to be asked, and I will be there, and I encourage you all to do the same. I want to echo Commissioner Spriggs' sentiments. You fellow board members, I am so proud of all you're doing publicly and behind the scenes for our citizens and city. Not all of it is acknowledged, not all of it is out there on social media, but each of you have stepped up and done what it takes to make our city shine, and I'm, I couldn't be happier as mayor, so I just wanted to say that. We do have plenty of events coming in, in the works, and some we don't even know about until today. Marty, I'm excited about the Food Truck Festival. I think that's exciting news. But, you know, part of, part of our role is to champion our city and to provide activities, but we also have to provide governmental services. And I want to commend the folks that are working at our recycling center. We've had rave reviews immediately from citizens about that being reopened and the staff being so attentive and kind, and so we appreciate them as well. That's all I have. City manager?
Mayor, what's that, what's that barbecue thing?
Oh, there is a barbecue event coming up, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, yeah.
The 31st?
Yes.
July 31st.
So I should have known you would be asking about a food event, Marty. Yeah, yeah. You're always on it, brother. All right, city manager?
Mayor, since you mentioned recycling, I do want to say we are not near capacity on, on the recycling center right now. So please, people who are eligible to do that, please consider getting back into that, in my vernacular, the battle rhythm. We definitely have capacity there for now. We expect it to be similar to what we had before. We had to shut it down for COVID, so looking forward to that. We do have a very full agenda, Mayor. I'd like to turn it over at this point for a presentation on the DeBord Terrace sidewalks, stairs, and handrail project by Howerton Engineering. Today from Howerton, we have Mr. Richard Howerton and Mr. Phil Hammond, also from the staff, DJ Reimer, and a gentleman a lot of folks here know, Mike Miller. So I'd like to turn the floor over to them.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Richard Howerton, engineer, surveyor. Howerton Engineering and Surveying, office is down in Greenup. Mr. Hammond is a project manager of my firm. If you want to stand and be recognized, we'd appreciate that. Our firm was fortunate to be able to assist the city on a project at the DeBord Terrace. Basically, the first part of the project was to go up and take a look at what kind of issues they were having on some pores that were done previously. Here's an overall map, just shows the overall project scope. There were twenty-three sets of rails and stand rail, handrails and steps that were reviewed. So ultimately, we prepared a analysis of the stairs that were already poured previously, identified some deficiencies in the ADA slopes and cross slopes. And at that point, I'm just going to flip through several of these. I'm not going to take up a whole lot of your time today. I know you're in a hurry, and you've got a large agenda. So basically, we identified the issues and deficiencies, and that's what was prepared there. Within, we've developed a set of bid documents. This is a thirty-page bid document set, where we actually prepared new construction plans for the actual stairways and steps and the handrails. And this is a set of the plans here that we're going through here, just to identify, so that then the city could then bid this project out to a general contractor who had experience, knowledge, and know-how on the, on pouring ADA-compatible and compliant stairs. And that's what you're looking at here, is a set of the bid documents that were prepared on behalf of the city, and DJ and Lorraine. We also had some retaining wall construction and some storm sewer as well. Here's some before and after photos, as you can see, on the left and the right. Here's the actual retaining wall under construction and the final product. So we were all, we were very impressed with the contractors. We felt they did an excellent job, and we also have a recommendation letter here from Mike, and we, like I said, we were very fortunate to do this project for the city, and would welcome the opportunity to do any additional services for the city in the future. Like I said, we're right here, local, right down the street, and we're a full-service firm. Mike, if you want to have a few things to say, I'll hand it over to you.
No, I don't need that. You took care of all the PowerPoint stuff. I'm just going to speak real quick. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Spent many years here previously. Been at the Housing Authority now about five years. First off, I just want to thank the city commission and the mayor, and the Department of Economic and Community Development for this partnership. As I'm sure you're all aware, this was a bid document. They took some things out. The Housing Authority partnered with the city through CDBG funds. CDBG paid approximately seventy-five percent. The Housing Authority paid another twenty-five percent out of our capital funds. What that allowed us to do is the parts that we took out, the Housing Authority, towards the end of this year, had enough capital funds to finish the entire project that was originally bid. So we have, for about a partnership, we have about a $600,000 project that we used, about $300,000 worth of CDBG funds and about $250, $270,000 of Housing Authority funds. We did that on a separate contract. But Chris Pullman and his department, it was a great partnership to work with. I want to call out, too, especially from that department, is Lorraine Woolery, early on, helped us get this project going. And then DJ Reimer was our point person all the way through this. They did an outstanding job. Howerton Engineering was good, and Frederick and May did an outstanding job on the construction. Never had an issue with them. If we had a question or something that was going on, whether it be with the city and the administration of the contract, whether with Howerton, it was about as smooth of a project as we've had that I've ever been involved with. This project, as I mentioned, was between $500,000 and $600,000. Just to give you a little bit of Housing Authority specifics, this is part of approximately right at $3 million that we've spent in the last two years on improvements at Scope Towers and DeBord Terrace. And one thing that has allowed us to happen, we've spent that money, and for the third year in a row, last year, the Housing Authority was considered a high performer by HUD. That's only the fourth time in its entire history that it was a high performer. It was a high performer in 2014, and then the previous three years. This project will help us maintain that status, and I just want to thank the city commission and their support of this project, and the Economic and Community Development Department, that we were able to partner to get this project done. I don't think, as a lone entity, CDBG couldn't do it, we couldn't do it, but we were able to partner together, and I just wanted to come in and show my appreciation to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. I want to say one more thing. This has nothing to do with those sidewalks, but I want to thank My Town TV, and Mike Miller's in on that, and Chris, and they've put on some, some sports things and, and just the weekends. That's a huge economic driver, to have these sports teams come into Blazer Gym, Boyd County Gym, Rose Hill Gym. You have travel teams from all over the country that come in here, and they eat at our restaurants and they shop at our stores. And so I thank you that you're a part of that also, Mike.
Friday night, when we were setting up for Furkin, I'm probably out of order, I'm sorry, but I just want to note this. Friday night, when we were setting up for Furkin, the hotel was full, packed, packed. And it was full of teams that were playing in the basketball tournament. There was a soccer tournament in Huntington that was going on. And, and it was funny, because we had the streets all closed, and we're trying to get this, this event set up. And all these people kept coming out of the hotel and standing in the middle of the street and saying, what's going on tomorrow? What's going on? Because they were from out of town. And they were all, they were all very, very intrigued about the festival and, and trying to figure out if they could fit some part of the festival into their schedule for the day, the next day. So it was, it was really interesting to sort of watch that, watch that unfold as we were out there putting up those tents and getting ready for the, for the Saturday festival.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, sports tourism is huge.
Yes.
And we, we definitely should be looking at ways we can capitalize on that. I think that's important.
For sure.
All right, public participation. For items not listed on the agenda, anyone with a comment or request can come to the podium and address the commission concerning matters related to city business, services, or personnel. We just ask that if you do speak on issues, to not repeat anyone else that has come in before us with the same topic. Anyone would like to speak at this time? Come on down.
Okay. Well, as you all know, I was at convention 10th, 11th, 12th, 13th with AMVETS. I got recognized on the floor about the award I won last year. Also, I got recognized for my work with Suicide Prevention. They didn't realize, they didn't, they thought I was older than I was, because I have, how long I've been putting flags out. And everybody couldn't believe I've done it for, this next year makes thirty-seven years. Other than that, other than that, everybody had a good time. The food was lousy, the bed was comfortable, and the beer was cold. So there you go. So it's all, all wrapped up in one. Thank you, and I'll see you guys.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, we definitely continue to recognize your good works and good deeds. We know that...
And also, while I'm thinking about it, I went and looked at Ashland Cemetery, asked, it's American Legion done it. It's so-so, but I'll tell you about that later, so.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak at this time? All right, we're going to go on to old business.
Old business item A, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, approving and adopting the 2021-2022 budget and appropriating revenues of hand, on hand, and to be received during the year 2021 to 2022 for the payment expenses of the city of Ashland for the twelve-month period beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, and repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item B, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, fixing the tax levy for the year 2021 payable in the year 2022 on the bank deposits franchise tax for revenue purposes by the city of Ashland.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, fixing the regulatory license fee at four percent of the gross receipts from the sale of alcoholic beverages within said city during the fiscal year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, as authorized and imposed by Section 24 of ordinance number eight, series of 2021, known and cited as the Alcoholic Beverage Control Ordinance for the city of Ashland. Such proceeds to be used to reimburse the city for expenses related to the sale of alcoholic beverages therein.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Sorry, just to reiterate what we said last meeting about, these are items that we essentially renew when we talk about every year.
The budget.
We do another ordinance.
These are not, these are not new, new items.
Also, this money, this revenue goes to the police department, is that correct?
Not all of it, but the majority of it.
Majority of it, okay.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item D, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, repealing ordinance number 169, series of 2018, which established guidelines and procedures for contributions by the city of Ashland.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item E, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, establishing premium rates for the city of Ashland, Kentucky Medical Care Plan, employees hired prior to July 1, 2020, non-fire union, and repealing ordinance number 102, series of 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky, establishing premium rates for the city of Ashland, Kentucky Medical Care Plan... Medical Care Plan, employees hired after July 1, 2020, non-fire union, and repealing ordinance number 103 Series of 2020.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, establishing premium rates for continued healthcare coverage under COBRA, and repealing ordinance number 105 Series of 2020.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the City of Ashland, Kentucky Medical Care Plan Summary of Benefits Renewals for Employee Groups, which established health benefit plans for Anthem Health Plans of Kentucky Inc. for the City of Ashland Health Dental and Vision Insurance Coverage for July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending Part VI Benefits A: Holidays of the Policies and Procedures and Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number 51 Series of 2017, as previously amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye. Oh, sorry. Ah, I think it's great.
Well played, Commissioner.
Sorry, I was reading.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent Agenda, Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of June 24, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to continue to emphasize that there's a lot of items on this consent agenda related to utilities and how we continue to work on those issues and support those issues with purchases necessary to get things done, so. Any other discussion?
Just a note, I have to abstain from this vote because I cannot vote on number 10, so instead of pulling that out, I'll just abstain. I'm fine with everything on it, I just can't vote on that one.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye, abstain.
All right, new business. Item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a school resource officer agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and the Ashland Independent School District Board of Education for the term July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and approving Change Order Number Four between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Granite Inliner LLC, increasing the contract in the amount of $8,032.16, adjusting the final contract amount based on actual quantities and work required for bypass pumping and traffic control during the lining of the US-23 sewer line on the Curden Place pipelining project.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and McDaniel Electric, Inc., for the purchase of 12 engine-driven standby power generators for the Department of Utilities Division of Water Distribution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just again, the purpose of this purchase is a result of hazard mitigation in relation to potential storms that could impact our pump stations and cause power to go down. The board fully supports this purchase, I can guarantee it. We did have some neighborhoods impacted by the loss of power to a pump station during the storm, the ice storm, the infamous ice storm, and this is moving us in the right direction, so appreciate the work on this. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the City of Ashland's 2019 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, substantial amendment number two, which includes the second allocation of CDBG CB funding in the amount of $86,241 pursuant to the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, and amend COVID CB projects to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, and upon acceptance of said application from HUD to execute on behalf of the City of Ashland, any and all documents associated with the grant submittal.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I do have a discussion issue here. Is it, do I need to not sign this document and have this transferred over to?
I think that's probably correct, Mayor. That probably should be signed by the mayor pro temp because of your relationship to one of the sub recipients.
Do we need to make a text amendment to the ordinance?
Yes, I think we can say, and executed by the mayor pro temp, and I think that doesn't change the substance of the ordinance, so we can, we can go ahead and have first reading and make that adjustment before the second reading.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the 2020 to 2024 City of Ashland Community Development Block Grant CDBG Consolidated Plan and the Program Year 2020 Action Plan, substantial amendment number one, in the amount of $573,725 plus carryover funding from previous years of $998,816.34 for the Department of Community and Economic Development, and submitting said documents to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for approval and implementation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Item F, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the City of Ashland's 2021 Community Development Block Grant CDBG Annual Action Plan, substantial amendment number one, in the amount of $575,864 plus carryover funding from previous years in the approximate amount of $660,707 to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, and upon acceptance of said application from HUD to execute on behalf of the City of Ashland in agreement with the US Department of Housing and Urban Development to enable the city to undertake these activities, and/or any and all documents associated with the grant submittal.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just take a second to say, I mean, this is our action plan. I encourage citizens to look up our CED action plan, or the CDBG action plan, and one of the things I've learned even before I was on the board is how, how much our team, our CED team does, and how much, how instrumental they are, and so many different things, and it's a very thorough plan. It's available on the website if you want to look at it, but I encourage everybody to look through that and see everything that's involved. There's some very, very important things that this, this department does, and they do a great job at it.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Item G, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and approving Phase Eight of the Gallo of Ashland LLC Apartments, and authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the Phase Eight approval regarding the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, Section Eight Project-Based Voucher Program for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, fixing the ad valorem tax levy for the year 2021 payable in the year 2021 on real estate, personal property, and franchises in the City of Ashland for the city revenue purposes, providing for a discount of 1% on ad valorem taxes only which are paid on or before the 15th day following the bill date, and providing for a penalty of 10% and 6% interest per annum for any taxes which are paid after the due date, said due date being 30 days following the bill date.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I, just for the record, I, I want to clarify that item G was a recusal for me.
Very good. Item I, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, accepting a proposal for renewal of life and AD&amp;D insurance through Standard Insurance Company for city employees effective July 1, 2021, and authorizing and directing the mayor to execute documents relating to said insurance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item J, reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled Municipal Order, the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing the Installation of String Lights by the Ashland Tourist and Convention Commission over the sidewalks on the east and west side of the 15th Street between Winchester Avenue and Greenup Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
It looked great.
Yep, I love it.
Thanks. This is a phased plan that started, obviously, with the area in our alley, and we're talking with citizens and business owners, and we're going to the next phase of, which, well, we already have the lights, actually, and then going down both sides of the street, on 15th and 16th Street, and it's, like I said, it's part of a larger plan, and so that's, this is the second step in that plan.
Yeah, I'm hoping we can do more alleys so we can have an alley hop. You know, yeah, it'll be fun. Do the music in each alley.
The food truck festival and an alley hop.
Yeah, bring the food.
We're adding, we're adding things on by the minute.
Bring the food.
All these creative minds.
Yes. Well, it's, you know, it's, you see string lights and you think...
Ooh, party.
Somebody... Right, exactly. You just think, oh, somebody hung string lights. Well, I can tell you there's a little bit more behind it than that.
Goodness, yes.
And you want to do it in a way that, obviously, we're doing it in a structured way. You can do things that are cool within the struck framework of a procedure, so that's what we're working on, and through Destination Ashland, we're, we're getting that done.
All right. Would anybody, anybody have any new business to add, or are we good? All right, Jim?
No, I'd entertain a motion then to go into executive session to discuss an individual personnel matter.
So moved.
End?
No end.
No end. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to go into executive session.[1276.82] We're going to go into executive session.
Let the record reflect, we returned from executive session at 1:25 PM. Only the item on the agenda was discussed, no action was taken. Do we have any other business at this time? As for a motion for adjournment, or excuse me, for recess until tomorrow at 9:00 AM in chambers?
Aye.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you all.
Meeting adjourned.